Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman is absent. Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Hello.
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P L nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January sixth, twenty twenty-two, and posted on the bulletin board on that same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We will now move on to special event applications.
Good evening, mayor and council. The first application before you is from the Kiwanis Club, seeking to use Springwood Park on March twenty-sixth. Second is the Saint Patrick's Day Parade on March thirteenth. Next is the National Brain Tumor Society's Walk and Remembrance Ceremony on May seventh. The Tutu Run on April the ninth. The Lobster Run on April thirtieth. And the New Jersey Vegan Festival on May fifteenth in Bradley Park. And Asbury Park Scott Talent, May fourteenth in Springwood Park. And we have two weddings, one on July twenty-third on Fifth Avenue Beach, and one on Bradley Park on June tenth. Are there any questions? Thank you.
We will now move on to items to be presented. We have a presentation by Pastor Van Zant, a Launch Center presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone, and I am so grateful for this. We are here actually as a team. Chip Craig, who is the executive, Associate Executive Director of Interfaith Neighbors, will begin our presentation.
Thank you, Samaj, and Mayor Moore and council. Thank you for the time this evening. And also thanks to each of you, I think, for coming over to the Launch Center and getting to see what that space is about. So we do appreciate you taking the time to be there and welcome us on the west side in the facility. I think most of the council and the mayor know Interfaith Neighbors well and our thirty-four years of service across Monmouth County, particularly through our homeless prevention program, rental assistance, and our senior nutrition program, where we're running close to a thousand meals every day out across the county to homebound seniors. What might not be as well-known but is as important to Interfaith Neighbors is our twenty years of work on the west side of Asbury Park, which started with affordable housing projects, and that continues today with our work. But that work in affordable housing led to Interfaith developing a comprehensive neighborhood revitalization plan for the west side of Asbury Park. And that plan encompassed housing, of course, education, which we will hopefully see come to fruition in about a year with the Early Childhood Learning Center on Atkins Avenue. It embodied health and wellness that we've had running across many of our programs at the Kula Farm. It embodied economic development. Maybe one of the best evidences of the economic development is the Springwood Center itself, where the Launch Center exists. And that was a tremendous project, public-private, between the city and Interfaith neighbors, with an outcome and an impact that can only be seen as positive, I think, across the city. And finally, our revitalization program certainly has encompassed workforce development. That's been a big part of our work over the past years on the west side of Asbury Park. And what we're here tonight to present is the culmination of those years of work through workforce development, training, and programs we've had. Many of you knew that we started that work with the Kula Cafe program, and it has expanded into many additional programs. The Launch Center may be new, but it embodies many things that we have been learning and presenting to the community over the years. It may be new in that it's a physical location, but the team that is leading Launch Center has been together for multiple years, had been introducing and meeting the community, introducing these programs. So what it is, is a further commitment, really, by Interfaith neighbors to be in the community, committed to the community of the west side for years to come. And for us to be able to present this to you and maybe have you join us in supporting this as it builds over the coming year would be encouraging and grateful to us. So from this point, I'd like to introduce the Launch Center team, led by Samaj, Gillian Edgar, and Kerwin Webb.
Thank you. So as Chip was saying, my name is Gillian Edgar. I'm the director of the Launch Center. As Chip was saying, the Launch Center is really a natural progression of the work we've been doing on the west side. As many of you already know, we've had a physical presence here since around two thousand and eleven, when we first opened the Business Development Center. We added Kula Cafe a couple of years later, and then followed quickly with Kula Urban Farm. So our physical presence here and our interactions with the community have given us a lot of insight into what types of service members of the community are looking for. And we've seen that other services have been needed that just haven't been available anywhere else in the community. And that's always been our method with Interfaith Neighbors, is to see a need and do our best to respond to that need. And that is really what's led to the development of the comprehensive offering of services that make up the Launch Center, which Samaj is going to review with you now.
So as you can see, what will come on your screen is that at the Launch Center, we have a variety of offerings. And these offerings provide entry points for people on all levels. So we start off with our personalized advancement services, where people can come in and they can get help with anything, from using our computer station to fill out unemployment application, to make sure to even use the phone call, to use the phone rather than calling and checking with the PO, or to apply for rental assistance and more. And you know, we've had people that just show up and say, hey, I got this piece of mail, I don't know what to do. And we've helped them from that. So it's really personalized to the individuals. And then we have these career preparation programs, which really just speak for themselves. The first two provide the work experience that people can gain, whether it is work experience within Interfaith Neighbors operations or level up where it's work experience and a trade. And then, of course, our flagship program of the SOAR Program, which is not an acronym, but the SOAR Program, which is an intense program that has two parts, eight weeks, for soft skills and professional development. And then upon successful completion, they can go into a certification program. And then we have our community enrichment. You see there listed is the Launchpad Learning Lab, where we host various workshops that just span the spectrum that help people to better themselves, to better their lives, and to really become strong individuals and help them to advance in whatever way that they need. Well, one critical part of our community enrichment are our connections with endpoint employers. And so during the SOAR Program and really all of our offerings that we have at the Launch Center, our goal is that when people finish with us or that as people work with us, that we help them find employment. And so we have what we call endpoint employers, where we have built relationships with people and with organizations and companies, where they can either get training for employment or where they can get a job. So there's Brookdale Community College. There's, these are just to name a few, Solar Landscape, right, which is right in Asbury Park. There's New Jersey Natural Gas, Advantage Career Medical and Dental School. There's Hackensack Meridian, R W J, Barnabas, Bank of America, Count Basie, Lake House Music Academy, and the list goes on. And I'm excited because I can really, I can present you all some hot-off-the-press type of information that we are actually now in conversation with and have already had discussions with Netflix, if the production facility and things were to go through in Eaton Town, where we can develop pathways for community residents in Asbury Park to do the training and get them employed at Netflix. I mean, and we're working to bring more businesses into the fold. And so in addition to that, we also, and because of our dynamic dialogue and relationships with these endpoint employers, we'll also be offering job fairs, right, for these companies because they're already interested and engaged in the community. And it can only benefit those who are in Asbury Park and anyone who comes through Launch Center for the better. And so, you know, you see all of these programs. I want to turn it over to Kerwin Webb because the combination of all of these offerings has had a significant impact on the individuals who have come to and through the Launch Center.
Yeah, the approach that we take at the Launch Center is that we meet the whole person and try to eliminate any barriers and obstacles as they walk along their path to success. We bring practical application with knowledge and information that they wouldn't otherwise have. And so we try to, we try to package together success skills in a way that we can walk along with our colleagues to success. But in the video that's right before this slide, you can hear some of our past cohort speak and share about their experience with the SOAR Program.
I think we're having some technical issues with the.
No video.
Okay.
Are we able to share screen? Either Gillian, is she able to share screen?
Sure. If you have it up, Gillian, go ahead. Oh. Hold on one second. Go ahead, Gillian.
Are we still on? Yes, we're still on. I think, trying to see about the sound option before you shared the screen. Okay, thank you. Yep. Try one more.
A change, but I didn't know like how much it would.
Give me drive, give me ambition. Now I'm a better person inside as well as out. It's give me drive, give me ambitions, and give me a back a little bit of support.
Life skills, and I felt like that would definitely help me in a change, but I didn't know like how much it would impact me. But it has impacted me for a good change.
SOAR meant to me, it was meant, you know, to uplift me with my, with my current, you know, goals that I'm trying to achieve.
My mind is bigger, the way I think is bigger. I don't limit myself no more.
Change, you know, change as much as I can get, man, as much as I can get.
This is a good turnaround program if you're interested in having and making a better future for yourself.
Awesome. So you see here that the SOAR Program, and not just the SOAR Program, but Launch Center has had tremendous impact on individuals and from right here in the Asbury Park community who are now contributing citizens and their lives have been changed. So here, I wanted, we wanted to present some of our service projections. For two thousand and twenty-two, our Help Desk is looking to serve one hundred people. Our Launchpad, which are community workshops, one hundred to one hundred and fifty people. For our Mission Control Life Coaching, which is one-on-one, twenty to thirty people with our certified life coaches. Our Lift Off and Level Up to serve about twenty people. And our BDC Coaching, which is our business development coaching, which, you know, Lake House Music is a product of, looking to help at least fifteen to twenty more businesses either get started or on the pathway to that. And then for SOAR, fifteen people in two thousand and twenty-two. But this is not, this is just for this year. But one of the things that we are looking to do is to expand our offerings, right, so that we can be able to help and to benefit even more people within the Asbury Park community. We are currently in discussion with the school district, Asbury Park School District, about how Launch Center can be used and our offerings can be used to benefit the students that are there. We have active referral organizations such as the New Jersey Reentry and more. And we believe that, you know, with the great amount of resources, we'll be able to have a wider and a deeper reach within our community. And that would result in what you see right here on your screen, right, as our three-year projections, that when we look at two thousand and twenty-five, which is a number hard to say, you know, Help Desk, we look to be serving between a thousand and twelve hundred people annually as people understand and know who we are, where we are, and what we offer. For our Launchpad, between three hundred to three hundred and seventy-five. Mission Control, thirty to forty-five. Lift Off and Level Up Work Experience Programs, forty to fifty people. Our Business Coaching, forty to forty-five. And then SOAR, between thirty and forty individuals. And all of this will have a tremendous benefit on the Asbury Park community and really be able to, and the residents and the community, and yeah, our family, right, our Asbury Park family and residents. And so I know, I know the main question on your mind is how much does this cost? And I want to turn that over to Gillian for her to give you those great numbers. Uh-oh, she's muted again.
Okay, so, thank you, Samaj. What we have not spoken too much about so far in our presentation is what we call our barrier busting services. So all of the services that we offer through the Launch Center come with wraparound services to help people get over whatever barriers are in their way to success. So through the SOAR Program in particular, we offer a lot of comprehensive services, some of which might be transportation assistance, childcare assistance, living stipends so that they can afford not to work while going through certification training programs. We also offer those transportation, childcare services through our work experience programs. And through the Help Desk and Life Coaching Services, as well as business services, we put a budget aside to be able to help people pay for driver's licenses or driving school in certain cases, help people with filing fees if they're looking for expungement services and things like that because we know that there's more to getting into a career and growing your future than just having appropriate training. Sometimes some extra assistance is needed. So our program costs in an annual run a little over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And that is based on our current, excuse me, based on our current enrollment in each of our programs and our current two thousand and twenty, or two thousand and twenty-two projections. But those costs are all relative to the number of people that we serve. So the more money that we're able to fundraise, the more people that we're able to serve in a given year. So our total operating cost, including salaries and operational facilities, is just under half a million dollars. So we're hoping to get assistance from the city with fifty thousand dollars annually over two years, which will help us to increase our service levels and meet those expansion goals that Samaj mentioned earlier. At this point, I'd like to open up for questions. If anyone has any questions about our programs, our budget, our service projections, we'd like to take those now.
It's John Moore. Let me thank Chip, Kerwin, Gillian, and Pastor, Doctor. I have no questions because I've sat in on two previous introductions of these programs. I'll open it up to the council.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to congratulate you on the program, the extensiveness of it, and how in-depth that you've gone and the surrounding services that you're providing to those who apply. So thank you for this presentation.
Thank you very much.
This is Councilman Kendall. I just want to thank you also. But it's one thing I would like to know if you have. Do you have a booklet or some kind of writing, all this and writing, that I can see, pictures and things of that nature? I'd like to learn a little bit more about it myself. Could I get in touch with you some kind of way? Or could you send it to City Hall for us?
Certainly. We can send over some literature. We also have a website that is posted at www.launchcenter.org that gives a much more comprehensive overview of each program individually and also gives information on how a person can be considered for each of the programs.
Yeah, and Councilman Kendall, too, we invite you to come. And anyone who's on this line that hasn't been in the Launch Center, we invite you to come anytime, Monday through Friday, right at twelve oh one Springwood Avenue. You can get lunch right at Kula Cafe and then come to those down and lunch or breakfast and then come to those down and take a tour of the Launch Center to see what we have there. And we also have some rack cards that you will be able to take with you that outlines the information that we just presented.
Well, thank you. You'll see me shortly.
Good.
That's it for me.
Amy, any questions?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay, well, that's it. Again, I thank you for making your presentation. Again, thank you for doing this, and we'll be talking shortly.
Great. Thank you all so very much. Really appreciate it and look forward to hearing from you all.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Thank you.
We will now move on to matters from city council. Councilmember Clayton.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to remind you that the city still has fast and free testing at the Transportation Center. So if you're looking for a COVID nineteen test, you can go to the Transportation Center Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty to six, or Fridays, eight-thirty to three. And it's in a mobile van, so you don't even have to go into the building. And the other news is that for Asbury Park residents who were affected by COVID, there is going to be a food giveaway, again, at our municipal building on February fifth, between the hours of ten and twelve. To register, please call seven-three-two-five-oh-two-five-seven-five-three, or you can text nine-oh-eight-four-two-oh-seven-four-five-five. And it is a drive-by. So for those seniors who are unable to get out, we will arrange for transportation and will deliver to you. So again, please call those numbers. Again, the numbers are seven-three-two-five-oh-two-five-seven-five-three, or the text is nine-oh-eight-four-two-oh-seven-four-five-five. Thank you.
Councilmember Kendall.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
I have nothing at this time. Just to piggyback on what Yvonne said, just want to thank our staff. Was not easy to get the mobile unit, spent hours doing it. Want to thank Donna, Mike, our social services department, and I want to thank Cassandra and Leish for the food giveaway. So really appreciated of our staff moving those initiatives forward. That's it.
Mayor Moore.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Matters from the city manager.
I have nothing, Melody. Thank you.
Matters from the city attorney.
And I have nothing either. Thank you.
Before we open up the meeting to the public, I just need to apologize. It seems that we had, in addition to the agenda, and mayor and council have not seen, it's Resolution two thousand and twenty-two-nine-nine, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to participate in the nationwide settlement agreement when Janssen Pharmaceuticals, AKA Johnson &amp; Johnson, McKeschen Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen to resolve claims involving their roles in the country's opioid crisis. That will come later on in the agenda. We will now open, we are now to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Members of the public may participate by using the raise hand function in the meeting or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and star six to unmute yourself. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining. I am calling upon three-three-five-zero. Three-three-five-zero.
Hi, Ernest McNolay, seven-ten Northeast Seventh Street, Winton Beach, Florida. Former resident of the sandtender at four hundred Deal Lake Drive for almost fifteen years. I hope no one forgot who I am. I know you've had in-person meetings. And I haven't been able to come, but I hope you remember me, Ernest McNolay. So I find it interesting that in national politics, state politics, county politics, officials, whatever they are, senators, presidents, assembly, judges, mayors, county, whatever about their time in office, when they're in office, and their life is public information. I mean, just, just look what they talk about, who's dating who. They don't care who dates who before you're the president or before you're a senator, but while you're a senator, it's public information. And what I find pretty disturbing, I go to meetings all over the country now because of virtual, and I find it interesting that certain municipalities, if you talk about something, let's say like a mayor does while in office, you know, you can't talk about, you can't talk about that. It's personal. No, no, there's nothing personal when you're in public office. I mean, I don't get it. And let me give you an example. Look what's going on in wall township schools. You remember that the last prosecutor, Graham Machoni, lives there and was involved there for many years. Now you have Laura Linsky, the acting one, right? Now, you got rid of Graham Machoni, a lot of the reasons because of the Seidel case, but, you know, a lot of reasons, but he's gone. And Laura Linsky takes over. She's a wall resident. And then what's been going on in wall schools and wall township for decades, that anybody born in this area or raised in this. Anybody born and raised in it knows everything and everybody and what they do in public office, not personal. When they're in public office. office, what a prosecutor does, what a sheriff does, what a senator does, what a judge does, what a mayor does, what a housing official does, a council, that's all public. And if if the public could only know what we all know about wall township and what's going on and the Seidel case, that they lose qualified immunity, and and look at the interactions of the prosecutors while they're prosecutors in office, look at, can you imagine the news if somebody like me could get on the news and say who's dating who on the side while they're in office, you know, that's not personal information, that's public information. Okay? So so it's too bad that I can't get venues because you.
Your time's up.
Thank you. Next.
I am now calling on Ron Simoncini. Ron Simoncini.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Ron Simoncini, Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition, three oh one Route seventeen North, Rutherford, New Jersey. Since the last time that there was a council meeting, there was a rent control board meeting or the last time that I was able to address this council, I attended a rent control board meeting. The Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition expressed at that meeting dismay over the timing for registration, which was uh sent out the first week and second week of January uh for an ordinance that was to take effect on February first. Um, we also continued to talk about the fact that we didn't think our residents wanted us to divulge their personal information as required by the ordinance. Uh, to date, we have three hundred and eleven residents who have expressed that they do not want their information shared publicly. Uh, and we think that there should be some sensitivity or some ability for them to opt out of sharing their public information, just as there is requirement that they indicate on their leases that they've been read the truth of rent again. There's there's room for some adjustment here, I think. The second issue there was that um we felt as though the requirement, having just three weeks or two weeks for some people, to actually have to register a lot of information that they'd never been asked to register before was too quick. And I I think we got some feedback at that meeting from the new attorney, Gene Anthony, who's a very sensible guy, um, that perhaps there could be a relaxation in some form. We we sort of feel like we'd like to get that formally done. Um, so I guess generally,
one minute.
I I had an opportunity to really think through um what's happened here regarding rent control. In particular, a comment made at the last council meeting really has stuck out my mind. I'm going to reference it a lot, which is that the reason for having rent control in New in in Asbury Park is because Asbury Park is a place where we want to stimulate culture. Rent control does nothing to stimulate culture. And I'm sorry that there wasn't a better reason and justification from your council for adopting a rent control ordinance that does nothing to create affordable housing. And I I incorrectly said at one point that you hadn't had any affordable housing created since you passed your affordable housing twenty percent law. You've had a few units, but you've lost hundreds. It's not something anybody can stop talking about. We're going to keep talking about it. So thanks for your accommodation on anything you can.
Time's up. I am now calling upon. Are there any? I'm sorry. I'm calling on Eric Glippo. Eric Glippo.
Hi, before you start my time, I have a second person here who would also like to make a statement when I'm complete. Hi, good evening. Um, some of you know me as a member of the zoning board from twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, and I've been on the planning board since twenty twenty. As a professional, I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners and director of the design practice for a New York-based architecture firm, and I have significant significant experience in community planning, site planning, and building design. I'm speaking to you tonight in my capacity as a citizen and wish to address recent actions related to the creation of a redevelopment area plan for the property at twelve oh one Memorial Drive. I moved to Asbury Park in nineteen eighty-five with my family, and I'm fortunate to still live in my childhood home at nine oh eight Fifth Avenue, which shares a rear and side property line with twelve oh one Memorial Drive. The property has changed hands many times until it was left derelict and demolished in twenty twenty. It's fair to say there are few people who wish to see this property developed and returned to active use more than me and my family. I commend the council for taking action on this long-trodden site and seeking to address some of our most pressing community needs, namely affordable housing and the defurcification of our aging housing stock. With that said, I want to strongly voice the following concerns. First, there is an issue of notification with establishing redevelopment areas within the city. Unfortunately, it came as a surprise to me and our neighbors that a redevelopment plan allowing a hundred and twenty dwelling units, including twenty-four affordable units, and a hundred and fifty parking spaces for this site has been under consideration for some time. I'm aware that the council has no statutory requirement to provide notice for the creation of a redevelopment area. However, redevelopment areas provide special development parameters, design controls, and incentives to the property owner, and the outcomes of these actions, no matter how well-intentioned, will impact the surrounding neighbor neighborhood in perpetuity. So it seems there is a gap between what is required and what is right to do to assure a process that is transparent and informed by input from the residents most affected by these agreements. Therefore, I'm requesting that in the future the council notify property owners within two hundred feet when they take up issues of the redevelopment.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. Uh, second, as an urban designer, I'm familiar with the Balancing Act necessary to incentivize affordable housing, and I want to voice my full support for the council to achieve these goals. However, that Balancing Act includes using site design and building design in the public interest to mitigate the impacts of increased density, height, and bulk. As it is written, the redevelopment plan would allow a new development to be built directly to the property line, effectively blocking the east-west view corridor down Fourth and Fifth Avenues. This view corridor is fundamental to the aspects of the city's historic development pattern and give rise to the perception of our pleasing streets. When the council takes up these matters, again, I would ask you consider amending the redevelopment plan to include the following design controls: aligning the new building with the prevailing setbacks on Fourth and Fifth, maintaining a twenty-five-foot setback along rear inside property lines, distributing the mass of the building so that it's taller on Memorial Drive, allowing commercial uses only within a hundred feet of Memorial Drive, and designating Fourth Avenue as their primary entrance.
Time's up.
Okay, next.
I am.
Thank you.
Calling upon Allison. Allison, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi.
If I'm bumping into Allison's time, please to give it back, but I thought it sounds, I thought there was a second call on a second person speaking.
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead and we'll get.
Eric.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead and get back to that.
Okay. Hi, my name is Allison Estes, and I live at nine ten Fifth Avenue in Asbury Park. I have lived at this address for almost twenty years and have raised my children in this neighborhood. Um, I'm also calling about the redevelopment plan for the twelve hundred block of uh Memorial Drive, which is a couple doors down from our property. Um, you know, I will tell you with a a little bit of a sense of humor that the train has been pretty loud without the building there. So I'm glad to hear that something's going to go up because it's been pretty loud in this neighborhood without without the building to block the noise. And I am happy, as Eric said, about the um, the affordable housing units that will be there as well. But I do have a concern about the transparency of how this all came to place and why we read about this in the newspaper instead of finding out about it um from letters from City Council. Um, you know, we were we were hearing about what's happening in our block by reading the paper and not by having anything from City Council. Um, and then the other thing is too, the uh, you know, all the other houses are have a setback, and this one is going to be out closer to the sidewalk. And um, you know, it kind of like it's been nice to be on our front porch and look at each other and ADAs and the things in our neighborhood. I can see Georgies from my porch, and now we're going to see a big um building that I hope will not be unattractive. Um, I don't, you know, have the expertise that my predecessor Eric has in in development. Um, however, I do want to second what he said, and my husband and I both are just concerned about the transparency and why we weren't notified about this project, which app, which obviously has been in the works.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. That's it.
Does that complete your comments?
Thank you. Uh, Melody.
Do you want me to go back to Eric?
Go on to other people. No, go on to other people, but Eric has his hand up again. That's for the second speaker. So do not like say it's over. He's not taking a second bite of the apple. Make sure we get to him before the end of the night.
Okay, okay. Why don't we uh, why don't we go to the second person for Eric now? And we'll get that out of the way.
You're the boss. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm calling upon Eric Glippo, the second party. Eric.
Hi, this is David Bedola. I am Eric Glippo's husband.
David, could you state your address?
Nine oh eight Fifth Avenue. Uh, I also want to um second his opinions about the building that's going up. I'm very concerned about not being notified. Uh, I appreciate that a building is going up. We are in full support of it. I am in full support of housing for affordable housing made also. Um, the fact that this building has been in the works for quite a while is, and and nobody has bothered to seek any information from us was is rather disturbing. At the planning board meeting on Monday night, we learned that this building was happening. Um, the director of city planning also explained that this kind of practice may continue in the future. So the the city has a really important role here to get this right. And if it's going to be done quietly and behind closed doors, that's not the way to go about it. The city council has made many statements about being open-minded, inclusive, progressive thinkers. And while that looks great on a bumper sticker or a campaign card, you have to put it into action. The fact that this was happening without anybody knowing about it is really, really upsetting. The fact that the city planner was talking about the needs and wants of the developer and not having any idea about the needs and the wants of the people who actually live.
One minute remaining.
Closely to where this building is going is also very disturbing. When pressed about the wants and needs of the neighborhood, the city, the director of city planning said, oh, yes, we are working with the community's concerns. Well, I know that's really not true because my concerns have not been heard, nor have my neighbors. So I don't understand how a person can say they know all about the wants and needs of the developer, but here we are, neighbors with the property. Our property line borders this built new potential building. And that this person knows nothing about my wants and needs or my neighbors' wants and needs. And I really hope that the city council stands by their voice of being inclusive. Thank you.
Time's up.
Okay, uh, I thank you very much. And I'm just going to say something now that may the previous speakers and future speakers. Uh, obviously, I was on the planning board call the other night, and I think this is the first time where like I was involved with a process like this, and the question came up, why weren't we notified? And the answer was, well, statutory, we don't have to. Uh, I agree with you. That's the wrong answer in the future. As far as I'm concerned, if there's any more like, I'll call it spot zoning like this, as much as people say it's not spot zoning, or it is, it is, whatever. If this ever happens again, you have my word, everybody within two hundred feet, same as planning or zoning board, will be notified. So again, you're right when we make mistakes. Uh, if we don't correct them, uh, shame on us. Uh, so as far as like the concern, as far as the citizens in the area not knowing what's going on, I totally agree with you. I'm going to say, you know, it has been on past council agendas. Obviously, it was on the council agenda to move it forward to the planning board. Obviously, it was on the planning board website. There was going to be discussed, but you're absolutely right. That's not enough for the neighbors. So uh, my apologies as far as I'm concerned. As long as I'm on council, it'll never happen again. So uh, next. Thank you.
I'm calling upon five one two four, five one two four. Please state your name and address for the record. Star six to unmute yourself. Five one two four.
Hi. Hi. Uh, Rita Moreno, five oh four Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, I wasn't going to talk about this, but this building has been coming up many, 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 many times. And they are building buildings right to the property line. Go look at the building on uh, the beachfront. It's raw. Bradley didn't want the town to be built that way. He wanted everybody to have a lawn and see the views like you're talking about. But, you know, you're low information voters. They could even have a hundred cars going up and down that street, Fifth Avenue or Fourth Avenue. I I talked about this at one of the meetings, and I'm surprised that nobody knows about it. But you have to watch the planning board meetings, as painful as they are, very painful, and to see what goes on. Also, the zoning meetings, we don't like to do it, but you have to do it. Uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the twelve million dollar bill resolution. I'm re- I'm really shocked that all on the last page, uh, twelve million dollars. Is this for a year? I don't want to go through every one of these things, but is this for a year or is this for a certain period of time? A half a million dollars for insurance, uh, health insurance, and we're not doing anything about it? That's sinful. The other thing about the school, I think that's only one payment. What does this twelve million dollars represent? It's almost, I don't know what the budget is. You hear forty-eight, you hear fifty. I really wasn't keeping track of that when I should have, but there was other things that were more important in my life. But anyway, what is this twelve million dollars? I'd like to know if some of these things are for a year or for a quarter?
One minute remaining.
I know the school. I know the school money, the one million dollars. And that's the other thing. When the pilot programs pay the city ninety-five percent of their money, does some of that school money stay there with the council to be spent, or does it go towards this one million dollars that is a payment? I'd like to know the answer to that. I I'm really astonished that there's six hundred dollars for cookies? I didn't know. I mean, it's really bad now. You have to be more transparent. I know you're good people, and I know you mean well, but you got to pay attention to the social things that are going on. Because we're not supposed to be social. We're supposed to be fiscal. And I wish somebody would be become fiscal. When you spend six hundred dollars for cookies? There's so many things in this bill resolution. I don't know what to tell.
Time's up.
Thank you, Rita. And if you want to call Donna or Joanne tomorrow, they can give you the exact explanation. There's the twelve million dollars, nine three eight oh, is for depositary trust company. So and uh, the million oh seven fours for the Board of Education, we have to pay the Board of Education bills. And this is like two meetings worth of bills and claims, uh, because there was none on the January uh, fifth meeting. Uh, but as far as like direct questions on any line item, please call there, Joanne or Donna tomorrow. Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Bill McElhenney. Bill, please state your name and address for the record. Bill McElhenney.
Can you hear me, please?
Yes, please state your name and address.
All right. Yeah, Bill McElhenney, uh, address seventeen oh one Ocean Avenue, uh, Asbury Park. Uh, first, uh, without I um, I'll try not to beat a dead horse over this uh, affordable housing. Let me congratulate the uh, council for moving ahead with affordable housing and a planning. Let me congratulate the, uh, council for moving ahead with, uh, affordable housing and a planning board. Long overdue. We've got it, gotta put some kind of governing on the rapid gentrification that's occurring in this city and the need for a balanced community. So I applaud it. Now, so having said that, it is extremely important that you not present something that makes it appear that you're trying to, uh, ease it in. That for some reason you can't bellyhood as something very important for the community. That it's not, uh, that it's not a very, uh, advanced project. That you're not, uh, ashamed of it or that you're reluctant about it. In any case, that's the reason to consult with the community. I mean, it's important that you underscore that. And I think it, you know, let me congratulate you again. That's a wonderful thing. Keep doing it. And, uh, you, you certainly have my support and the su- support of, of my frie- of friends. Um, I'd like to go back to, uh, the original presentation on, uh, the interfaith, uh, neighbors. Um, sounds like a very wonderful program. May I suggest that you somehow either in- interfaith or you or to- together, uh,
One minute remaining.
figure out a way to make a presentation that shows the progress and development of individuals who are subjected to this program, who participate in it. Uh, I, it's so that we can see the specific benefits of it. It sounds like a wonderful program. If it's working, we'll, we will be able to recognize that through the uh, presentation that you make. And I endorse the council spending a hell of a lot of money. Support the program as much as you possibly can. Thank you. Uh, Happy New Year. Bye.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Happy New Year to you. And I'm sure both interfaith and the city will be putting out a lot of data on this program because it, you're right. It's an excellent program and we're excited to get it up and we're going to keep track of it and put results out there. So thank you again. Next.
I'm calling upon Alex Kretuski. Alex, please state your name and address for the record.
Alex Kretuski, 610 Sewell Ave. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Incredible. Um, I just wanted to comment on, uh, on what was, a comment was made by the property owners about, uh, how rent control doesn't create culture. I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding here, uh, and I, I don't think I paid quite as much attention to uh, the various two comments made by the deputy mayor, uh, at the end of the city council meeting at the end of December. Rent control does preserve culture. Culture is only created by those residents who are uh, united and calling somewhere home. And what Deputy Mayor Quinn so astutely pointed out last meeting was that this community has seen a significant reduction in the black population to the tune of 30%. Uh, those are residents who lived here, called this place home, and each and every one of them contributed to the culture that has been our greatest asset. And what we have lost is unquantifiable and unqualifiable as they moved out. I encourage everyone to review the comments the deputy mayor made at the end of last meeting, as I really believe they get to the heart of this issue and many other important statistics are listed. But I just want to make clear that this is not a community people come to from the outside because it's like other shore towns. That it, whose entire existence is determined by the speculation concerning the proclivities of tourists. This is a community that people come to because they believe there is something special, rare and unique contained within the culture of this community. And when we see a 30% reduction in the black population and a housing market that is increasingly inhospitable to low income residents, we become worried that we will that this community will lose the economic inclusivity that has made it what it is. And for anybody to come to this council meeting and deny that changing the, the economic hostility towards any income level is going to change the culture, I just don't think I understand culture. Doesn't understand culture. Cause culture is not something that's just created then goes away. It is something that is a legacy institution that is a, a very important part of what unites any town in, 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 in that pride that
One minute remaining.
Thank you. I am proud to come from Asbury Park. And I believe the property owners coalition is trying their best to get a, get a handle on exactly, uh, uh, what this community is and how best to accommodate it. But I think when comments are made such as a 30% reduction in the black population, Asbury Park does nothing to create culture. Fundamentally misunderstands the culture here and fun- and, and furthermore, somebody who does not rec- recognize that economic inclusivity is at the heart of what has allowed the culture of Asbury Park to flourish. Not to just something that can be found in many other places along the shore, but something that's truly unique and borderline undescribable. Again, needs to get a better understanding and needs to do a better assessment and analysis of the particular, unique and rare assets that make us so proud to call the city home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Catherine. Catherine Minervini, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Catherine Minervini. I live at 1012 Fifth Avenue, also known as Kitty. Um, today I, um, I'm talking about 1201 Memorial. I also sent an email to city council, Amy and, uh, Amy Quinn and John Moore um, regarding this. So I'm just reiterating some of my comments today. If it wasn't for the game of telephone, no one around here would have known what is happening on that parcel of land. And that is a true shame. I am so upset over the fact that that, you know, you're our voice. There has been no transparency, no constituent approval. No one asked us. That is not an inclusive community. You speak on behalf of us. And that planning meeting the other night, there were city officials that were speaking on behalf of the developer, who were actually sticking up for the developer. I'm sorry I had a real problem with that. And that's a real shame. Okay, aside from transparency, there is just no thought or vision put into that plan at all. These are the rules, fit a bunch of crap in this, in this parcel san- of, of land and take nothing else into consideration. No streetscape, not even greenery, no, no carve out a little area for people to sit. It, we're going to be walking by a gigantic parking garage. That's going to be sitting there for a hundred years. I, I just, the lack of vision and the lack of of thoughtfulness in, in community, in neighborhood, in architecture and design. This, there's a lot of really smart people in this city and it is quite amazing that something like this is just, just getting swept right under the rug and it's just going to be built one day. Uh, you know, I, I mean, not to get so
One minute remaining.
for this, but I, I cannot, I am just incredibly disappointed. And, um, and like I said, if we weren't texting each other all day and I took time out of my workday to, to write the letter and inform all of our neighbors. It, it's just, it, that's not how it works. That's just not how it works. So I expect the conversation to continue. I hope that you listen to all of us and I hope we have an opportunity to to, you know, to, to give our input. So thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I am calling upon Alessandro, Alessandro Mutter. Please state your name and address for the record. Alessandro?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alessandro Mutter. I, um, live at 1002 Fifth Avenue with my partner David Duncan, who's also on this call. Uh, I just want to, uh, second what several members of the community have already expressed. Uh, I am also amazed at the lack of transparency and, um, and the, the total absence of, uh, notification to the community about a project that will have a tremendous impact on all of us in the community. Uh, as to the actual, the merit of the project, there are some design flaws galore. Uh, the lack of, uh, the, the whole discussion about, uh, the setback, there was a, um, potentially allowed all the way to the sidewalk, blocking the view. Uh, the, the, the design of the, of the, uh, building as presented looked absolutely inappropriate for the community, for the neighborhood, for a residential neighborhood made of, uh, individual family dwellings. Uh, no discussion on greenery, uh, streetscape. And, and, and also I, I agree with those who, uh, have gotten the impression that the city was actually sticking up for the developer. One revealing comment that I, uh, really stuck with me was from a city official who was asked, what about the parking? Can it not be underground? And the answer was, no, that would be too expensive for the developer. Well, I, I'm sure that should not be the answer to that question. Uh, so I, I just hope that there will be more transparency going forward, that there be a way for the community to, uh, come out and have serious input into this project until it is modified accordingly, appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, Kitty, thank you again. And, uh, as, as I said after David Bedola spoke, uh, you know, again, it's the first time this has ever happened, as far as I know where this was done. So nobody said, hey, Mayor Council, why don't you send out letters? A, from either the administration, from planning, from planning board or anything, uh, I already gave you my word. It will never happen again because you're absolutely right. Again, Rita helped a little bit by saying like this has been discussed many times at council meetings, but again, anybody affected by any zoning in an area will be no 200 feet. What were we talking about? Like $10 in stamp? So bad mistake. It wasn't done on purpose. Uh, it can be changed and it will be changed. Again, I apologize. And, uh, I don't know how many times you want me to apologize, but I will. Next.
I'm calling upon David, David Duncan. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I guess my name is, uh, David Duncan. I live at 1002 Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Um, I'm also, um, um, speaking about 1201 Memorial. Um, I take, uh, Mayor Moore at his word. I appreciate, um, him. He's always been very straightforward and, and honest and and forthright. So I take him at his word. Uh, but I do think it's important to again, mention, um, the lack of transparency in this, uh, process. Uh, it was very upsetting. Uh, when I, you know, I was told by several neighbors that I should, uh, log in to see this, um, planning board meeting. Uh, I was kind of very excited because I actually want to see some development there. This, this been either a vacant building or basically a kind of a, um, a messy field for, for a long period of time. So I was kind of excited. And when I heard number one, that basically how far things had gone without any sense of communication between, uh, 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 between the, the, the board and, 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 and the, uh, the neighborhood was very upsetting. Um, and there was a portion where one of the city officials said, when they were asked about the opinion of the neighbors, they inferred that there had been some kind of a consensus or they had taken some kind of survey. Um, and inferring that this was already kind of semi-approved by the neighbors and they were kind of called on it. I mean, they I mean outright lying about saying that she had somehow, um, had, uh, taken a survey or understood that there was an agreement. This was already kind of a, an approved and, and people were very appreciative of the, of this, uh, plan. So I, I was very upset, um, by hearing that. Um, and, um, and the other thing that really grabbed me too was that, you know, I've just been through the planning board service or process myself. Um, I took a long time trying to make sure that I, you know, uh, crossed all my Ts, dotted all my Os. I went by all the requirements of the, uh, of the statutes of the, of the development zone that I was in. Um, and I, you know, whether I have to go through the zoning board or the planning board. And then to hear that basically kind of through a vacuum deal that the idea
One minute remaining.
the developer is going to be able to basically circumvent going through zoning, go right to planning and then basically be given all of the, everything they want. Um, because they're, you know, and I'm for this affordable housing, but just because they're supplying something, um, they're basically getting a pass on everything that's not good. Um, so anyway, those are my comments and, uh, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Peter Siegel, I'm calling upon Peter Siegel. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Peter Siegel, 1412 Main Street, Asbury Park. Thank you for having me speak. I'm a property owner in town. Uh, my management company is responsible for hundreds of using units of housing and thousands of residents. And from the perspective of managing the recently amended rent control ordinance, I wanted to make a request and I'd like a response from the appropriate person after I'm done speaking. Uh, the request is, uh, as it pertains to the ordinance, section 1513 and 1514 and in other areas, but primarily in 1513 and 14. The ordinance requires property owners to deliver leases and renewals via certified mail, uh, along with other disclosures and have tenants sign that they received disclosures. We have to forward all that to the rent leveling officer and I, I, I'm very happy to comply with all of this and do, do all of this. And, uh, what I'm asking though is to please and begging, I, I mean, I don't know how strong a word I can use here. But please, 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 can you please consider changing the rules so that we can do this digitally and a hundred percent of our tenants uh, have opted into our very robust and expensive digital platform where they sign leases digitally, sign leases, uh, and renewals digitally. It's 2022. We haven't sent certified mail in a billion years. And is there a way for you guys to accept the digital stamp or form signed by the tenant that I can forward to you guys digitally that says they received the lease renewal on time within the prescribed amount of time as well as the disclosure? So please, I mean, it's absolutely incredible that we have to use certified mail when we can do this digitally and I'm hoping that you can consider that. To my friends at Memorial Drive who've been speaking tonight, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that there's been deficiencies in the proposed building and I hope that there is a way to satisfy the community of neighbors there.
One minute remaining.
And, uh, but I do applaud that there is something getting built and I, especially in the light of trying to stabilize housing prices and housing unaffordability in our town. The only way to do that is by increasing supply. You can't regulate or legislate housing prices into a, a solution. Uh, but you can certainly build more supply. Everything's supply and demand in life, including housing prices. So please continue to build more supply and encourage and incentivize the building of more housing supply. And lastly, uh, I would like to remind everybody that it is illegal to enact legislation based on race. So the referral, uh, referring to rent control is, is preserving black people or minorities or culture. And that's why the law was enacted. And I've heard it been mentioned many times now over many months. It's illegal to do that. Uh, and thank you for my time. I'd love a response, please.
Yeah, uh, Peter, uh, thank you. I, I don't have the two sections in front of me that you cited, so 13 and 14. Uh, as far as the certified mail. Uh, Matthew Segman reached out to me, uh, giving it to the administration. We're looking into it. Just because all of your tenants use computers doesn't mean every tenant in the city does. So we're, we're, we're looking at it and we'll get back to you on that one. But, uh, there's some two and three, you know, small units that, you know, they don't use computers. So it's, uh, it's something we're looking into. Thank you. And then it's Donna. You want to add anything?
No, Mayor, nothing to add. Thank you.
Melody, next.
I'm calling upon Carrie Butch. Carrie, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Carrie Butch. I live at 500 Dale Lake Drive. Um, good evening, everyone. I, I am here listening to, I guess, my, my neighbors complain about this redevelopment site. I guess I want to know how did that site become an area in need of redevelopment in this town? With, with, um, how did it, how did it fit that criteria? And in addition, we've talked about this before, but we have redevelopment attorneys, we have planners, we have, we have a redevelopment machine in Asbury Park. That I do, I do agree with Catherine that it does feel like the planners and the attorneys and oftentimes they feel like they, they work for the developers, not for the people of Asbury Park. And you, John and, uh, Eileen, Amy, Yvonne, Jesse, you know that I've been talking about this for a long time, maybe since, I don't know, since the 1990s when this all went crazy. And we, we signed that crazy, crazy redevelopment plan. I guess from my standpoint, can we change that situation so that, that, that that entity doesn't look so horrific? And just don't just put a, a label on it saying it's giving affordable housing. So it can be ugly or it can block views or it can create a, a neighborhood change. Don't just do that. We love affordable housing. But we also want to keep our, our neighborhood feel. So I guess two things, can it be changed? Can you find out how that became an area in need of redevelopment and explain it to the community? And last but not least, I've repeatedly asked if you could bring in Joe Marazidi. And now there's new, even more redevelopment attorneys that were just hired. So can you bring these folks in?
One minute remaining.
And sit down with the community, have community presentations, tell us where we are with our redevelopment. Because things consistently change. And from what I understand, there's 3,800 units to be built on the waterfront alone. How many is, how many units are going to be built in the rest of the community? So can you bring in? Can you educate the community on where we are in all of these redevelopment plans? And all of these, what we've promised every redevelopment area in town? I think almost the Northwest section is probably the only section that is not a redevelopment zone currently. It seems like now they're, they're now experiencing what's happening. So can you give me an answer? Can you bring in Joe Marazidi and the other redevelopment attorneys and educate the community on where we're at in this process? The big picture. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Time's up.
Thank you, Carrie. Let me digest that and get back to you. As far as like, I don't want to say anything wrong. I don't think Michelle's on the call. How that particular piece of property, we're talking about 1201 Memorial, fit into the redevelopment zone? So I don't want to say the wrong thing. As far as the meeting down the road with, you know, Mr. Marazidi handles this, the waterfront and Archer and Grinder, as far as redevelopment attorneys handle the rest of the city. So that's something we'll look into and see if we can do. And again, this was a mistake that occurred where people weren't notified. And again, I gave you my word. I appreciate some of you believe my word that that will never happen again. But again, you know, it didn't come out of the blue. There was discussions at council meetings that council had to pass it. You were probably at the meeting when we passed it to move it to the planning board. Nobody ever thought about notifying the thing. Nobody ever told me, hey, John, you know, you should notify the thing. Now I know, I've been told, now it happened, notified the public within 200 feet. Same as a zoner, planning board issue. Unfortunately, on this one, we learned by our mistake. And again, it won't happen again. And all your other questions, you're going to take some digesting. Give me a yell tomorrow, we can start talking about them. Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Matthew Daniels. Matthew, please state your name and address for the record.
Matthew Daniels, 1026 Monroe Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I am commenting in response to a comment made by the Property Owners Coalition that was in a response to another comment that was in response to another comment. And so I'll keep it short because I'm sure that we all don't want to be going around and round. But I just feel it is necessary to clarify that my, my friend Alex Kozetsky was not talking about legislation based on race. He was responding to a comment that was culture or that was rent control has nothing to do with culture. And a lot of the culture of Asbury Park has to do with the black bodies and the black people of Asbury Park. It's very, very simple. But also I can see how it could be misconstrued as, oh, this rent control ordinance is just about black people. But it's about keeping Asbury Park and the residents of Asbury Park in Asbury Park. It's really simple and I'm not sure how it's getting confused or anything like that. But I just felt it necessary to clarify. See, see Councilwoman Quinn's comments. And you can see why it is so important to actually, you know, bring up these issues and bring up the fact that, that black, black people and people of color are being pushed out of Asbury Park. And, and also other people are being pushed out of Asbury Park. But to specify, so that we know that it's real, so that we know that it's not just something that is on paper, that someone is pitching, that we are as the Affordable Housing Coalition are pitching.
One minute remaining.
It's all real. Thank you very much. And that's about it. That's all, that's all I have for you. I hope everyone had a, had a great new year. And I am very happy to be on this call with everyone and, you know, nice and socially distanced. And, you know, I hope everyone remains safe and, you know, healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you. And you're absolutely right. The main thing right now is everybody remain safe and stay safe. Next.
Not seeing any other hands up, but looking for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now closed to the public.
Melody, just one quick point at the end. I believe, and people can go back and certainly listen to my comments at the December meeting, but the words I used were economic diversity. I think basically, I don't remember everything I said. It was long, but I believe I, I suggested that if we lose economic diversity in Asbury Park, we lose arch cultur and diversity. And completely stand by that statement again tonight. That's it.
Thank you. We will now move on to the minutes. We have the Municipal Council Executive Meeting of December 22nd, the Municipal Council Regular Meeting of December 22nd, the Municipal Council Special Executive Meeting of January 5th, the Municipal Council Organizational Meeting of January 5th. And I am asking for a motion and please remember to identify yourself. Move it.
Quinn, move it.
Okay, no, I understand. Okay.
I'm sorry, I lost everyone.
Our second Kendall.
Second Clayton.
Okay, I have the, the motion from Councilmember Kendall, the second from Clayton. Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to the Consent Agenda Resolutions. On the Consent Agenda, we have Resolution 2274, a resolution approving the special events applications. Resolution 2275, authorizing appointments to the Asbury Park TV Committee. And that appointee is Lester Green. Resolution 2276, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Business Advisory Committee. And that appointee is Amy Floss. Resolution 2298, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Code Enforcement/Quality of Life Committee. And that appointee is John Scully. Do I have a motion?
Quinn, move it.
Okay, no second.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to the individual resolutions. Resolution 22-77, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Go.
Resolution 22-78, a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriation reserves in the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Move it, Clayton.
Quick. Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-79, a resolution authorizing the execution of agreements to provide municipal services or reimbursement payments thereof to eligible multifamily dwellings.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-80, a resolution authorizing the execution of agreements to provide municipal services or reimbursement payments thereof to eligible qualified private communities.
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-81, a resolution awarding a professional community nursing services for the City's Department of Social Services for January 1, 2022 through January 31, 2022.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-82, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to the Rogers Group for Police Accreditation.
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second? Not hearing a second?
I'm hearing a second, move on.
Right, resolution fails. Resolution 22-83, a resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate in on-demand transit services.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-84, a resolution amending a contract with Parker McKay for Oprah Consulting Services.
Move it, more.
Move it, Quinn. Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-85, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Birds Beware for Geese Management at Sunset Park.
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-86, a resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement with the Township of Neptune for geese management of Wesley Lake.
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-87, a resolution authorizing the renewal of Office 365 software.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-88, a resolution approving change order number one and final for the citywide wayfinding project.
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yeah.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-89, a resolution approving change order number two at Sunset Lake Park Improvement Projects.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-90, a resolution authorizing the emergency purchase of tires needed for a DPW loader used during snowstorms and freezing conditions.
Move it, Kendall. Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-91, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two roll-off containers for the Department of Public Works.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-92, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a forklift for DPW.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, more.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-93, a resolution authorizing the purchase of an air conditioning system for the police department.
Move it, Clayton.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-94, a resolution authorizing the purchase of lights needed at Sunset and Library Park.
Move it, Clayton.
Do I have a second?
Second, Quinn. Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-95, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city council to execute a discharge of mortgage for Linda Petruski for a property located at 1300 Fourth Avenue.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-96, the resolution authorizing the mayor and the city council to execute a discharge of mortgage under the Community Development Block Grant Home Buyers Assistance Program.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-97, a resolution authorizing the reprogramming of funds as a result of a substantial amendment to the City's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2019.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-99, a resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to participate in the nationwide settlement agreements with Janssen Pharmaceuticals, AKA Johnson &amp; Johnson, McKeschen Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen to resolve claims involving their roles in the country's opioid crisis.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor and Council and members of the public, I'm simply seeking a reaffirmation of your vote on previously adopted bond ordinance that have been adopted at a public hearing held on October 27th. This is being done on the advice of Bond Counsel. We have Bond Ordinance Number 2021-36, a Bond Ordinance Amending 2016-16, and Bond Ordinance 2018-4.
Melody, this is Donna. If I could just interject, and the reason why we have been asked to have council's affirmation is that there was some paperwork that was supposed to have been noticed and filed that was not done in accordance with the bond requirements. So this is just more of a correction of errors. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Bond ordinance twenty twenty one dash thirty seven, a bond ordinance providing for various transportation utilities. Do I have a motion?
Oh, move it, Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, one quick thing, and it's not earthbreak or anything, but just anybody who hasn't been able to watch it, including myself, Amy Snyder lost tonight, so jeopardy streaks over.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
You finished on? Move it to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
More.
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned.
Everybody stay, everybody stay healthy.